It was five hundred thousand dollars. He was quite a state engineer. The other one said it's four hundred thousand. I don't think they completely do.
Oh, bro, bro, bro.
It's five hundred.
It is, yeah. It is.
Thank you.
I don't know if complaining about it.
It's like, girl.
He just did this.
Just to discuss.
He gives me the...
Yep.
He gives me the whole history of how we came to decide what we were gonna have.
I was just gonna say, isn't there brothers and family?
And most of the time, it revolves around sales.
Not necessarily with the reports that's part of it.
Yeah, like, that's great.
I love it, Dad. I'm ready.
Are you ready?
Ready.
You ready? There's somebody on.
It's six thirty in the evening. I'm officially calling this meeting to order, the Mount Vernon City Council. And the first plan is one, the agenda is to approve the agenda. By that, I mean the amended one that has the closed session.
So, wait. So, take it along?
Or he had...
We are actually in the closed session.
Okay. So, the most recent agenda had the closed session. So, we need to amend that.
We didn't have it, then we added it, now we don't need it.
We were making sure you were paying attention.
So, I approve of the agenda amended to move the closed session.
Scott, is there a second?
Okay.
Mark. It's moving seconded to approve the final version of the agenda here. And if we're all in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, we're on to the communications part of the meeting. If you're here to speak to anything that's on the agenda, just wait until that item comes up on... Through the agenda process here, and our agenda's in the back of the room. And for open comments section, open comments section time. I know Lindsay would like to speak, if that's possible, over here. And this will be your name, who you work for, the context here, is your address.
Thank you.
And make sure the light's green.
Uh, it's red.
Yep, push it.
So, hit the button, just push it.
Go.
Is it green?
It is red. Oh, just...
There you go.
Wait, I'm just pointing at like a... Okay, got it, awesome, thank you. Thanks so much for welcoming me. My name is Lindsay Glenn. I am a resident here of Mount Vernon. I grew up here, and when I had kids, I moved back because it's an amazing community, and I'm proud to be a part of it, and I'm proud to have kids here in the area. I went to school for nonprofit administration and then grad school for gerontology because I fell in love with working with older adults, and I spent my career doing so. And so, I'm incredibly passionate about advocating for their needs, and I'm passionate about Mount Vernon. So, I'm interested in proposing a program that might be of interest to Mount Vernon, which is essentially what's called a dementia-friendly program. This is a program that we can either work on providing a one-hour training to city departments such as city hall, the fire department, the police department, and we can provide this one-hour training that essentially goes over best practices to work with people with Alzheimer's or dementia, and helpful tricks, and also resources that are available for the community in assisting them. We also have the ability through a dementia-friendly program to put together an interdisciplinary team to look at, is our community supportive of older adults? Are we supportive of people with Alzheimer's and dementia? And so, those are essentially two different routes that we can take. I'm interested in volunteering to help with this program, so I can provide the training, I can help put an interdisciplinary team together, if that's something that the city is interested in. But essentially, it really is because we have sixty-six thousand people in Iowa with Alzheimer's or dementia and caregivers that need our assistance, right? And so, I, because I love our community and because I love older adults, I would love to volunteer in any way to pull some formal programs together to help support our older adult residents. Because this community is absolutely amazing and safe for kiddos to grow up in, it would be amazing to make sure that we're supportive of people across the lifespan. So, what I've done is put together a little packet for each of you. It has a flyer on the program. It also has a resume so that you know a little bit about my background, as well as my card. But what I'm hoping that you guys will do as a council is to look at the programs, read a little bit more about it, discuss amongst yourselves. And then, I'm gonna follow up with Mr. Weisler to talk about if there is interest in pursuing some programming to help educate or advocate for older adults, and then we'll keep that conversation going. But it's a great opportunity for me as an advocate and volunteer to partner with you guys and provide some credibility to some amazing education programs to support people across the lifespan. So, that's what I have for you today. Any question?
We've got another minute, so is there any questions? Thank you for being here and for taking the initiative of doing this and also providing the perspective that this would be in addition to supporting adults or people in Mount Vernon across the lifespan instead, so...
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I remember having somebody with Alzheimer's walk past my house as I was outside playing with my kids. And I think without having my knowledge and understanding to recognize that this person had Alzheimer's and recognize how to approach it respectfully so that not only were they safe, but their choices were respected, was really important. And so, if we could give the tools to community members to be able to respond similarly, I think would be really great. And emergency responders, how do you, how are we, you know, working with people that we're having to respond to an emergency is always helpful, too.
Well, especially if, let's say that there's someone with dementia who's driving, driving right down the middle of the road, twenty miles an hour on a fifty-five or something like that, and the police come, and they say, raise your hands, and they don't do that, how do you respond?
Yes, yep.
It can be a very scary situation.
Yeah.
And my father-in-law, that happened to him, not exactly that, but he, they had to do a silver alert and everything for it, so...
Yep, and it's affecting more and more individuals. So, I would be excited to have Mount Vernon be part of our efforts in supporting older adults.
I would, that to go past the five, but my mom didn't suffer from dementia necessarily, but towards the end of her life, through, I mean, she effectively did periodically. And Jake's crew and Chief's crew responded, and they did a great job. But knowing that had they gone through this training, they could have done an even better job relating to her would be very valuable, so, yeah.
Great.
I like this idea. Thank you for being here.
Me, too. Nice to meet you, Lindsay, and thank you for your willingness to bring this to us and to volunteer.
Yeah, thanks so much.
Thank you for coming, Lindsay, and I'll sure be in touch. And in my first career, I know having to do monthly safety meetings or service meetings or something of educational nature with staff. Forty-three years in that industry, I like having speakers come out and volunteer on tiny things that would help and not be the normal, the regular safety thing.
Right.
But it's something that's interesting and important, you know? Thank you much. And I think that getting feedback from Jake, Chief Shannon, you know, the LBC, yeah, everybody that comes to contacts with our seniors, or anybody that could have dementia or Alzheimer's.
Well, it's important for us to also have greater knowledge as well, I believe.
All is well. Thank you, Lindsay. And now, we're on to the consent agenda. We've got three items on the consent agenda.
I will move to a first.
Second. Moving seconded to approve the three items on the consent agenda. If we're in favor of that, if we're all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Public hearing. I'm officially open the public hearing for ordinance, repealing ordinance eight-five-twenty-nineteen A, amend the original white lines planned unit development. Staff, have anything to add for our explanation?
No, the report was included. Essentially, this is just changed hands twice. First item, they want to change the PD, and now that it's changed back, but they want to change it back to what it was originally, so one big circle of light.
Welcome. If there's anybody here that wants to speak to that, this is officially open the public hearing. Did notice that there's three soul signs of the lots. Yeah, I remember by there today as well, and that's what it's standing here, that they release those souls. Anything else I should discuss in this public hearing? Otherwise, I call this public hearing closed. We'll move on to ordinance three-seventeen-twenty-twenty-five A, repealing ordinance eight-five-twenty-nineteen A, amendment to the code ordinance to see Mount Vernon. We won't finish.
I approve of ordinance three-seventeen-twenty-twenty-five A.
One second.
Scott and Stephanie. Moving seconded to move forward that ordinance three-seventeen-twenty-twenty-five A. Staff, anything to add? If there's no explanatory. If there are no questions, if we're in favor of that one, that is Marsha.
West.
Yes.
Engel.
Yes.
Andreessen.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
And motion carries. Got to mention at the beginning of the meeting that Paul told me a long time ago he didn't like to be here, but with this spirit.
Question to staff, is there any reason for us to speed this up by moving to a third reading? I appreciate that.
There really isn't a significant change, so you could just sort of block down your agenda, budget process and everything like that.
I would support that.
It will take, I do want to point out, you know, before you make that motion, it would take all four of you to vote in favor of it in order for that to work, so...
What is the law, council? I'll support it. So, let's start with a motion and...
You would need a motion to weigh the...
Suspend the rules.
We have seconded, moved to third.
Final reading of that.
I would move to suspend the rules and proceed with the final reading of resolution three-dash-seventeen-dash-twenty-twenty-five A. Craig, is there a second? Ordinance. Ordinance three-dash-seventeen-dash-twenty-twenty-five A, thank you. Catch. Sorry. Is there a second?
There you go.
Mark. Moving seconded to move forward with future readings. And if we are ready to vote on that, is that a voice vote as well? Or a roll call vote?
Yeah.
Marsha.
Rose.
Yes.
Andreessen.
Yes.
Engel.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
And that passes, ordinance passes. Who would, resolution for approval G, three-seventeen-twenty-twenty-five A, award the bid for twenty-twenty-five Uptown lighting improvements. Nelson Electric.
I'm gonna go ahead and call Dave out here because we borrowed, or planned to borrow, five hundred thousand. So, he told staff that the original estimate was five hundred thousand. Put in his report that the estimate was four hundred thousand, but I would have borrowed five hundred thousand. Either way, whether or not it's slightly below or slightly above the engineer's estimates, Nelson Electric was the only bidder on this project at four-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars and forty cents. If you then hard borrow, that's a happy number somewhere. Not to cover any technical issues that we run into during the project.
And just a reminder, this is the smart lighting and the bases and all of them.
Yeah, this work would have needed to be done regardless of we were part of the streetscape project or not, in order to take full advantage of the streetlight project, project to align, this work needed to be done.
So, speaking of which, if we do this now and then we move forward with the Uptown Streetscape, are we going to be needing to redo this when that comes through?
No. So, part of this is we're running the cable that they can tap onto if they move the bases. There will be work that will need to be done as part of the streetscape project itself, but...
Likely the bases will move, it'll adjust, but we can point out for that.
But we would have needed to run new conduit and run new electric lines.
So, it's either we do it now and take advantage of this deal through a line, or we do it later and maybe not have that deal directly whatsoever.
And it's more expensive.
Gotcha, okay. I just, I figured there was gonna be some version of the answer, but...
No, it's a good question.
I have a question about timing. Any idea when this will happen?
So, it'll start right after Chalk the Walk.
Correct.
Hypothetically, it will be done before Heritage Days. I'm sorry. Any prep work they can do ahead of Chalk the Walk that won't interfere with Chalk the Walk, they're gonna start doing. But the bulk of it will be between Chalk the Walk and Heritage Days. And they're pretty confident they can do it, so...
Nelson's confirmed.
Yeah, there.
All right, I'll move to approve resolution three-dash-seventeen-dash-twenty-twenty-five A, award the bid for the twenty-twenty-five Uptown lighting improvements to Nelson Electric in the amount of four-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars and forty cents.
Is there a second? Okay. Moving seconded by Stephanie Mark to move forward the Nelson Electric bid, and...
Andreessen.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
West. Yes, Engel.
Yes.
That resolution passes. We have the motions for approval. Claims list, that's what presented. Any questions from staff about that claims list? I would move to approve the claims list as it was presented in two drafts.
A second.
The motion on the floor to approve the claims list is presented. If we're in favor of that, if we're in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Question consideration order acknowledging a settlement agreement for a first violation of Iowa Code, section four-five-three-A two, council action does neither. This was pretty satisfactory.
The smoke shop in Bay in Mount Vernon has already submitted a three-hundred-dollar civil penalty in the year, so the council just needs to approve the settlement, and that will get forwarded on to the state.
So, is this in response to our nobody under twenty-one being in, or is this actually selling to somebody under twenty-one?
This is selling.
Okay.
So, they were caught.
They're fake ID, whatever, okay, gotcha.
So, what would happen if there were another violation after this?
I would love to tell you that, but I do not know how the violations start to stair-step after the first.
Yeah, I didn't know if this was a time... Why is it that the three have to be like within a year? Or if three, you know, like the first violation stays that way for one year, five years, forever?
Not, not typically. And I, like I said, if Doug were here, he could probably rattle this off quicker than I can. But assumption being, most of them are within a calendar year. But I've seen them go two or three years. Their permit could eventually get revoked if they had enough violations. But I do know that the fines start to stair-step up and increase with each subsequent violation, so...
Actually, we're taking here as an acknowledgement of settlement, so it's a little bit different than some of the other motions we have, so...
I approve of the acknowledging the settlement agreement between the smoke shop and...
What's it again?
Scott and Mark. Moving seconded to move forward the spout of the settlement agreement, first violation of Iowa Code. And if there are no further questions or comments, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
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 And opposed, that motion carries. Next item for approval is discussion consideration of Uptown Streetscape Master Plan. J.O. Consulting. And here it is, all yours at some point.
Good evening, council. Thank you for having me here again.
Thank you back, everybody.
It's lovely to see you all. I've seen some of you in other capacities along the way, but just wanted to give you all an update on where we're at with the Uptown Streetscape Master Plan and Streetscape design. So, starting last year, we began the process of the Uptown Streetscape master planning. We did two open houses. We had a workshop where we worked with community stakeholders to develop our ideas and, you know, figure out how we feel about things. There was a public survey that was posted on the website that people also were allowed to submit on paper for the first open house. And after soliciting all that feedback, working with our advisory group, we met monthly for pretty much the entire year up until Christmas time, and we did follow-up with them after the New Year and as we got our final, final version of it, which is what you have in front of you now. And so, this is not the design document. This is still aspirational, but this is what it could be after all is said and done, after lots of investment has gone in and it's been refined over time. And so, we still recommend that you attack this piecemeal. But I'm gonna walk you through some of the highlights of the plan. You have the nice physical copies, and I'm gonna have it up on the screen so that everybody else can see, too. But where we're at in our project is we are already in the design phase. So, we're taking some of this and marrying the ideas with the physical reality and the budgets. I worked with Chris and Lori to kind of figure out what our initial phasings are, which right now looks like, you know, we split into two parts, west of Highway One and east of Highway One. Might change a little bit as we get into the details and budgets, but roughly speaking, it's gonna be a two-phase approach with the north alley improvements being sometime much further down the road. So, that might take a little bit more refinements before we decide what needs to go on in there. But so, without further ado, I'm gonna hop onto my computer, and we can page through this real quick. I don't know if that's working or not. All right. Now, people, if anybody's online, they can hear me. All right, so, cover sheet, nothing too exciting. Existing downtown, very exciting. Table contents, not very exciting. All right. So, you know your community really well, and I'm very proud to be a part of this project, and I know our firm's very excited because you have such a healthy uptown. It's got wonderful historical character. You guys use this space so much, and a lot of small towns should be envious of what's going on here. And so, the background just covers the existing state and some of the historical nature of your community. And then, we talk about why we're doing this, and it's because Mount Vernon's ready for that next step, to enhance public perception, give more opportunities to the businesses, improve safety within the community, make sure that we are providing the best for the community. And so, our goals, safety and accessibility, preserving the community's identity, making sure that we have access to our businesses, and as much parking as we can feasibly maintain, and implement some of that sustainability, which we're talking both environmental sustainability, but also financial sustainability, what's going to be cheaper for you to maintain in the long run. Existing conditions, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on this because if you've been at our open houses or the stakeholder meetings, we've covered a lot of these previously, but stuff like identifying where the safety concerns are, a lot of slope issues, one of the main concerns being American Disability Act compliance, which is now covered by ProAg, the Public Right-of-Way Accessibility Guidelines, and a lot of that comes down to slopes and making sure there's no tripping hazards, that there are ramps where there need to be ramps, and making sure that people can get across the street safely and are not exposed to traffic unnecessarily. So, we have detailed where those slopes are. Talking about where our primary accessibility are, where people are traveling to and from, that's including our parking areas. We will note that you did add a parking area on the north end. We want to make sure that our ramps are there. Another driving factor is utilities, particularly west of Highway One. There's a lot of old service lines and a suspicious water main that we need to do something about. So, we do understand that tearing up this section of the roadway is very necessary. So, we're gonna take advantage of that in order to provide enhanced uptown. We wanna emphasize history and character, some of the concerns that we heard from the community. We've got quotes pulled out from our survey. Please take time, just know that we're not pulling these goals out of thin air. These are things that we heard from you all in Mount Vernon. We talk, we go over some of the survey results. As you, on the right side of the screen are, from the web survey, the visual preferences of what kind of character we want from the community, how uptown should behave. We want lots of walking. We want it to be a center for arts, culture. We wanna make sure that there's dining opportunities. People come here to eat, they wanna go to restaurants, they wanna go entertainment. The, chapter three is about our community engagement. I touched on that when I was at the podium, but that's our second open house, held at the community center. Some of the survey results about who was responding to our online survey. A lot of longtime residents. The majority of people were here for twenty-plus years that responded to our survey. So, this is, we're getting primarily from people within the community that have been here for a long time. So, some of this might be new to you. If you came to our open house during Chalk the Walk, you might have seen some of these concept renders, but some of them have been tweaked since then. So, generally, the enhancements have been grouped into four different categories, and that is, what do the block sections look like? What do the intersections look like? And, you know, I'll just pass through it. And then, are there corner treatments that we can provide? So, things like enhanced lighting, street trees, the bio-retention plantings at the corners, which is both a drainage solution and a nice landscaping feature. The idea is that water flowing along the front of those parking stalls flows into those little planter areas by the corner. And then, there's some intakes within that planting that will take the water underground, but we wanna give as much opportunity for it to go in the ground rather than into a gray concrete infrastructure system and send it elsewhere. From there, the plan moves into a block-by-block where we can see some zoomed-in concepts of what these might look like with landscaping, hardscaping, parking features, crosswalks. Got some lovely renders of the area. Between second and first, we've split it into a north and south side just because these are a little bit more involved, and we wanna emphasize the connection to the parking spaces behind them. I will note that the plan is a district-wide approach. The design that we are doing is for first AV only, so we're only staying within that area, whereas the plan is looking at how does uptown function as a whole? How do we connect to those parking areas? Are there ways that we can, you know, make sure that people can move freely to and from uptown?
So, is that the definition of uptown? Or just more, what is the definition of uptown that you're operating off of?
So, we're basically, I'm gonna go back to here. That's what this graphic is, is our study area is the blue dashed box, so basically up to the parking, north and south.
Okay. So, this is halfway down, so we've got like, so the second set of blue lines, blue vertical lines in would be Highway One?
E... Let's see here, can you see my?
Yeah.
Yes, so this is, this is...
And there's that alley, and then there'd be like, whatever, first.
Yeah, this is Highway One, and this is first.
Okay, all right.
And we've kind of got, we've got some secondary areas. This red is, our design goes down to B and up to Third. And so, those are not necessarily... And so those are not necessarily uptown, but they are adjacent and help it function smoothly, so.
And the design features that we're talking about could easily be expanded to include in certain instances.
We could, we would probably negotiate some scope change of our contract because right now, our contract is for just stopping at the edge of.
Yeah, that's some other council.
Return, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So Jeremy, stop there for just a second.
Sure.
One back.
One back.
Or two back, actually, you can go. So it looks like you're going to put a bump out for this recommendation right at Highway one and First Street. And it says in there that we're going to narrow or shorten the walking path between the curves as a result. And I think there was something in there that said the standard is 20 feet and we're at 21 or something and maybe at 19. I can't remember exactly, but I read it a while back. Will a bus or a semi be able to turn?
When we do the final design, we'll do turning movement analysis to make sure that they can access it. If we need to, let's see if I can pull up one of those renders. There's a few different things that we can do, but sometimes what we have done in the past is that for this little triangle wedge that's between the ramps, is we'll do a mountable curb here and a little bit of a concrete blister to help ease that movement.
So what's the distance approximately between here?
That's about 24 feet.
Oh, so okay, so it's a lot wider than I thought it was going to be. And what do you think it is right now?
Right.
Sorry, I forgot the clock.
I was like, off the top of my head, it's probably about 30.
Oh, it's more than that.
It's a little bit more.
Yeah, because I think when we were first starting, this, somebody said that Springville Road is still a farm.
Farm-to-market.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we're going to have big trucks come down here, then Cornell will have the big buses that are going in there for student athletes and so on. So that's why I asked the question.
Yeah, and we'll make sure that, you know, turning semi-trailers aren't overtracking too much, or if they are going to overtrack our bump out, what we can do to mitigate that and prevent damage. I know right now, if you look out there, some of those bricks are caved in because semis have overtracked. And we want to design it in such a way that even if they do overtrack, because not every driver is the best, and then mistakes happen, we don't want it to immediately collapse under the weight of those semi-trailers. And so there are things that we can do to mitigate.
Well, I know a big problem that we've had, we've replaced curbs on those radiuses With the development on each end of town, we get, we get the low-boy semi-trailers coming in that are sitting, and when they cut that corner, they'll shave that, they'll break that curb right off. So having more of a rollover curb would be more beneficial.
Yeah, that's really, this is for, like, we want to shape it for everyday use, for people in passenger vehicles are going to go all the way around. But just like with roundabouts, we put those mountable curbs in all the time because we know we need to make allowances. One of the features that I'm going to emphasize right here, this was a big talking point and one of our big selling points that came up in our advisory committee meetings and in our open houses, is this anchor space in the middle of the block. And I'm going to see if I've got a render here. We've got some other ones. And it's creating some outdoor entertainment space. It could be used for outdoor dining. It could be used as a central location for Chalk the Walk or your other festivals. You know, this is where you set up your main tent or something, or a stage, or a live band. This is your community gathering space right in the center of town. And it also serves as an extra pedestrian crossing that connects North Alley to the Hilltop Pocket Park. So this, because we know that people cut the block, they don't want to walk all the way down to the corner at Highway one and then go across the street and then all the way back up, we know that they're going to cut the block. And so creating this spot right in the middle draws visual, like, a driver cannot ignore that this spot is clearly meant for people and that they need to pay attention for the pedestrians. And so some of the other features you'll see here are movable planters. We know that permanent hardscaping here limits what you can do with the space. And so we've shown it with some movable planters. You could connect them with chains or you could leave them open. It's kind of meant to be a more modular fix. So generally, we've got the bioretention planters on either side, but the middle is for you to do what you will. One of the other features that we have proposed, we'll see as we go through the design process, is designing this almost as a speed hump so that it comes to an at-grade crossing, making it more convenient for our aged and young to cross the street here, but also again, making sure that the drivers are slowing down and paying attention.
One of the noted intentions or concerns, I guess, in the comments was lack of parking. How many approximately spaces would we lose with something like this?
This loses about three to five, depending on how we configure it. We do have a mitigation for that though, and I will get to that.
That's a lower number than I had expected, so.
Yeah. Keep in mind that there's not currently parking in front of the alley.
Right. And I'm not convinced that that's an actual, I think that's a red herring issue eventually, but thank you.
Here's another picture of that crossing.
And I'd forgotten that there isn't parking in front of those.
Yeah.
It looks much.
It looks like a big space.
It looks like a way bigger space that you're going to lose than you actually are, so yeah.
And I think overall, we only lose, what, three to four spaces overall uptown?
Which, and I don't think you saw the final renders yet of.
I don't think I.
I don't know if we did renders, but we did do a layout for an improved parking lot that.
No, I haven't seen that.
That combines the alley parking with your new little teeny tiny parking. So again, outside the scope of our design, but something long-term to consider. This is another, talking about the general section that we want to maintain within the community, is giving those defined pedestrian zones, maintaining the angled parking that you have, and then a vehicle driveline in the middle. We are tightening up the vehicle drivelanes a little bit from what they are. Typical drivelanes are ranged between 10 and 14 feet. We're looking at about 11 for this, which is appropriate for low-speed urban environments. That helps provide a little bit of friction there. Keep in mind that there is parking next to that, which makes it feel a lot wider than it is, which is part of the reason that people probably fly through a lot faster than they are supposed to, like, today. And so that's one of the other reasons that we're doing those bump outs at each of the corners is again, tightening it up at each opportunity to help remind drivers that this is a place for pedestrians too.
So here's basically 22 from like the back of each of those parking spots across.
Yes. So it's, so face a curb to the back of the parking spots is, yeah, I think 22 feet, then it's 11 feet, 11 feet, and then.
Okay.
I think you can make angled parking as shallow as 19 feet, but I don't think we need to go that far. The idea is to provide a consistent walking path that doesn't require you to weave in and out as much as possible. We will, there is a place that we do need to weave a little bit, and we will talk about that. This is talking about the north side, again, showing that anchor space. A simple concept for North Alley. We know that this is probably a longer-term goal though, but this just kind of shows a simple landing space, that there could be some outdoor dining and a little switchback ramp to get down there while maintaining access to the double doors at this gentleman's business. And then this is.
I wonder about that. Thank you.
So we're keeping it simple here. We had earlier concepts that were much more involved, where we tried to get more landings in there, but it all just got a little too complicated. Right now, it's very heavy right here. Again, we're going to push that to a later time. So this is what we're showing now. So that you can see he still has direct access to his doors and it's just a little.
He can pull his truck up there and maybe.
And so those are. No, never mind. Good.
And, you know, we could, we could do some of that string lighting up in, up here, just like we have shown on the other one. This is showing the, right by Ace, this is, this is kind of cutting right through the two parks. So cross-section here. So here's our 11-foot drivelanes, 21 for, this is both parking and the seating zone are that 21 feet. And then our beds are about nine to 10 feet throughout the corridor.
This is my question.
Which, again, for a commercial area, we want at least six feet. But we also don't want them to be walking right next to the curbs. You got to add a foot for that. We don't want them brushing their shoulders on the wall, so we got to add a foot for that. Plus, we've got all those steps that stick out, so we've got another foot for that. So as I said, we need about nine feet at least for the majority of the corridor and to give maximum access within the community.
And you may not know this off the top of your head, but right now, just kind of generalized, how much sidewalk is there?
It varies.
Yeah.
It varies quite a bit. I think it's about eight feet on average. So it's a little bit narrower than we want it to be, which we've made up by.
Yeah, I mean, this is a 15% increase on that, so.
It's like, there's definitely places where it's much, much less. This is showing kind of how you might bring in some of those landscaping and bump out elements to the alleyway entrances to kind of visually indicate that this is part of uptown too, so people don't forget that the parking back here is for them. This could come with signage. I know we talked about doing like a fancy gateway or something here, but it's for you to get creative with, but just reminders that these alleyways are part of uptown. So getting into the section east of First, I know I told you a little bit that there was one place that we needed to jog the sidewalk a little bit, and that is due to a limited right-of-way between the pharmacy and the other building across the street. And we played with this a little bit, we talked about it, that the best way we could think of to provide ample access to pedestrians and not lose as much parking and without providing strange accessibility questions by skewing the intersection. It's like, we could turn the intersection so that you come in at an angle, but that, there's already visibility problems with it being up at the top of the hill. We'd rather not get weird with it. So we recommend taking the parking spots directly in front of the pharmacy and making those parallel. And then we've also shown it here, you can see that this is meant to be your handicap access for that block. So we've got an extra ramp right here, right into the pharmacy, so that we want to make sure that we get priority parking for our, you know, the sick and the elderly, right?
Would that allow ample room for people to get out of their vehicles in that?
Yeah. It's, it's a little wider than a normal parallel parking spot for that.
So what's the, are we doing that because like if I look, it looks like the pharmacy and Fuel are a little further.
Yes.
Into the sidewalk, so that's why we're saying, okay, we don't have quite the walk.
Right now, it's a straight shot across the street, but the sidewalk's only about four feet from those stairs to the back of curb, which is not very comfortable as it is. But once you, once people start parking their cars and they come over the curb, it gets really uncomfortable and tight. And for a critical place like the pharmacy, we really think that that pedestrian access is important. Also want to point out that on total, that between this block and the next one, we have lost no parking by doing this. This, this is a net zero.
So it looked to me that between A and B Avenue, right across from the First Street building there, that there was no longer parking on the south side, parallel parking on the south side. I was going to bring it up later, you just mentioned that, so, but between A and B.
Right here?
Yeah, you see the green there? So is there, is there still parking on the street there? Because across the street, there is, in front of the First Street.
I'm not sure that there's, I think this is the existing curb line, actually. I don't think we've changed this section, other than.
Because there is parking.
There is? Okay.
Yeah, there is. That's my old house.
Okay.
Well, I lived there 40, 24 or 23 years ago, I don't know.
I'll have to look at that to make sure that we have considered that. I, I think what happened was that right now, none of this exists, that this sidewalk is basically flush with the street, and so it has basically jogged north a significant ways to provide for that. And by keeping it straight here, we've lost it on the south side.
Well, there, there is room between the sidewalk and the, and the curb because we planted a tree there a couple years ago.
All right. I'll, I'll go check on that.
Side of both.
Small enough.
Hey, the city gave you the tree.
It's just another render of the seating spaces at First to try and show what it might look like with the landscaping improvements. You see, this one shows the drop curb actually, that we were talking about, how there's like a, it's setback from the curb. So this render shows it with the setback. It's hard to see on the screen. Maybe the paper copies will show it better. These are some of the typologies that we brought to the stakeholder workshop. So it was looking at, do we do parking on both sides? Do we do parallel parking on both sides? Do we do a hybrid? And I think we decided that keeping diagonal parking on both sides was preferred, so we did that as much as possible. Do we do paved bump outs? Do we want planters? Do we want just enhanced crosswalks? Talked about what the outdoor seating might look like. Oh, here's definitely that setback here for you, Eldon. Can you see it there?
Yeah.
Okay. Does that explain a little bit more what we were aiming for to provide room to cut These were, these are not renders of your community. These are examples from other communities that we've worked with and how they've handled and created a certain aesthetic that we think is applicable for you. We want to encourage public artwork. You've already got some lovely public art, but finding opportunities for that is great. And we've got a section talking about that. And then this part's the boring part, and this is scheduling, budgeting, and funding. And so we've broken it out into three general phases. We talked briefly, we've got phases one and two, and then we've got the outer regions as a long-term goal. And.
Jeremy, this is three blocks, right? Because it's, these are, these are price per block, is what I was asking Lori earlier.
Oh, this, right here?
Yeah, three blocks. And so is that first, the base level to be basically $300,000 per block or $900,000?
So that's, it's 300,000 per block face. So because sometimes communities will do one-sided street and then the other side of the street, if that makes sense for their phasing, I think because we need to reconstruct the road and do the utilities. At least for Phase One, you're probably going to have to do both together. And then for Phase Two, you could consider doing it the other way, but so it's more like 600,000 per block, if that makes sense. I think in our meeting, we talked, it was about 2.5 per phase, 2.5 mil per phase. It's a lot.
It's less than what I thought it was going to be. I was surprised.
And then, speaking of gulp, funding resources. We have some lovely funding specialists at JEO that know where to find grants and how to pay for things. And so we've got a whole section here right at the end talking about how you can pay for it. I'm sure Lori and Chris already know about a lot of these, but just reminding you what opportunities are available to help pay for these kinds of things, you know? Things that I'm not super strong with because I'm an engineer, so things like Iowa Economic Development Authority, Sustainable Community and Demonstration Projects, I don't know anything about that. Economic development is not in my wheelhouse.
Did we meet the person that works with you that, that does this work? Do we meet the person that works with you that, that does this work during the?
I don't think Aaron's come with me to this.
No, Aaron has not been at it, no.
It's like, I'm sure Laurie, you've spoken to Aaron somewhere.
On the phone, but I haven't personally.
But the very least, we probably want to show this section, not the whole section, certainly they can show, so.
Yeah, that's interesting, yeah.
So that even proves that.
Jeremy, you just mentioned phase one, um, being done as in relation to Craig's question about the 300,000 being purchased. Um, and you mentioned doing phase one all at once. Why is that? And the reason for my question, let me just, the context, is, one of the things that we talked about when we first started this conversation was ways to mitigate the impact on the Uptown businesses. And my concern with doing all of it, at least in, all of it in one phase, in one section, um, at the same time, is that.
Right. So, we had originally broken this into five phases as an option, and it, uh, we worked with Chris and Laurie a little bit on this to talk through the feasibility of that, so one thing to keep in mind is that the way the law is when it comes to accessibility improvements is if you modify the street, you need to provide maximally accessible.
And once you start digging, you gotta do.
Crosswalks, and so, once you do this main block right here, our utility corridor that is such a big deal, all of a sudden, you're doing these ramps too? And now you're already a third of the way into doing this one, and this is like your cheapest phase out of all of them? And so, once you're already onto this side of the block, you might as well do the whole thing.
So, when you, is it possible to break it up north and south?
I will never say never. I will say, good luck, Laurie, if you do.
Laurie's over there saying, no, but.
You get some challenge with, with trying to break that up north and south.
I'm just looking at all, you know, I just, into traffic flow and as many options.
If you could theoretically saw-cut down the middle of the road surface and get them to align perfectly? Potentially, yes. Um, keep in mind, even if you go to a five-phase approach, you're actually doing more harm than you are good. Because now you're disrupting kind of that economic hub of the community for potentially five years versus.
Yeah, it's a, it's a rip the band-aid off versus just.
Also, economies of scale, you do it together, it costs less overall.
Yeah, the, the north-south, I, I think, yes, at least in, in staff's mind, it's always been an east and a west conversation. The question really is, do you try to do phase one, phase two in one fell swoop and just be done in a year and a half to two years? Or do you break it in half? Given the, um, credence that we give to festivals in the downtown, I would prefer, because we can shift them east or west, um, and still hold somewhat of a functional festival, to break it in those two phases. We haven't gotten really too, too excited about even meeting with the grants individuals for JEO. And the reason for that is because, remember, the Highway One's gonna be priority number one, it's on the state's docket for being under construction. And going back to an earlier comment about being a farm and market road, First and First are essentially, uh, the detours for one another, so.
Can't ship them both.
We can't have both, I mean, we can, I would take a year-long vacation.
Doug's thinking, I'm retiring just in time.
That was gonna come back after you, I'm thinking, a one-year hiatus and, uh, no. But, I, you know, that's a 2027 project, we haven't exactly seen if the DOT plans to do that in, in one massive shop. My assumption is it's a north and a south project for them as well, because they're not touching, um.
The hills.
From third to third.
Yeah, the third one.
He's up in the story, so.
So, um.
So how will that work, and they're working on Highway One, and we've got this design for the corners?
They're not doing.
They're not touching that.
Okay, so they're just, okay.
No. So the, the, yeah, the areas from third to third, uh, won't be, be touched by, um, the improvements.
My other assumption with this, I'm just kind of answering my own previous question to a certain extent, but what I've gathered is we're not 100% sure what we're gonna find when we start digging. We have, any ideas of what's under there?
That's always a challenge.
Right, and so, back to if we try to do the north side first and then the south side, whatever's under there isn't gonna line up perfectly with that sort of construction schedule either.
I think particularly from first to second here, this part has so many service lines to run that it will be basically impossible to do north and south separately, because you're gonna Swiss cheese the other side, no matter what you do. So at least this first one, it makes sense to do both together. Over here, you have a little bit more freedom, um, but it may not make much sense either.
So do you go right over the brick?
Supposedly, yeah, yeah.
I thought, I mean, that's what I'd always heard. I mean, when you see the asphalt pop out, you see brick, so I'm assuming.
I think, yeah, over here.
I'm assuming that whole thing's brick.
We find the golden brick contest, and I'll be taking it.
Yes, I, I think our payment corps did find brick on the.
There's absolutely no golden brick under there, it's just this giant scam to get people.
I'm just saying.
Well, we have been really creative with the brick used previously, so I think that's something, you know, and again, this is a, a five years down the road kind of question, but, once we start digging that up.
Chris.
Doing, yeah, but you know.
I, I'm really quite happy if you just wanna do an asphalt overlay. I know it's not happening, but.
Really?
For whatever reasons, we have to.
Laurie, look at this whole crew, just scrambling.
No, I, I, you know, um, listen, we threw out like two and a half million for the first few phases. I would expect, by the time we get these projects underway, that number's at least three million, maybe a little bit more.
So. Intangency.
You were right, Laurie.
I just wanted to hear it right.
But you're not, right now, I agree. But, you know, again, there's a, there's a lot of things that have to happen. The good news about, not necessarily, we're not necessarily pumping the brakes on the project. We weren't expecting Highway One to be under construction with the DOT, you know, when we first started having a conversation about this particular project. So, gives us time, gives us time to work with the business owners and, and, um, you know, gear up for disruption in, in the festival season and things of that nature, so, um, this is a positive. There are a ton of grants when it relates to USDA, small town, we're outside of the Cedar Rapids Metro Park enough that we qualify for a few other ones, but, um, some of our communities do not, so.
It's also your economic core, so you qualify for a lot of economic-based grants that you wouldn't normally be able to put on to a street project, but because this could provide value to your businesses. All right, well, that's the entirety of the document, if you have any further questions?
This question's worth to staff, like eight to 10 months ago, I think we committed to a crosswalk, whether that's, um, maybe a crosswalk or a.
Are you talking about the, the First Street building?
Well, yes, was that more an A, was it pretty much to line up with A, so it doesn't fit, it's not quite down here?
No, maybe we come back out. I, I mean, we're, we're talking about putting a, a sign in a crosswalk.
Here?
Yeah, because, uh, students. Get, get on and off the bus at that location, but when we finalize plans, we'll have to have a conversation about how to incorporate, you know, pedestrian signage.
Kind of the issue, I didn't know if it was in or not, but, um, I guess it, it's a, you know. Jeremy, you talked about there were traffic dampening, like, uh, pinch points and, uh, and the slightly raised walking, different colored brick or whatever, but there are no speed bumps per se, okay, so that's appropriate, yeah. Um, I think the, with the, um, features you've got at the intersection and the, and the middle of the blocks, that would tend to slow up traffic, and sort of the purpose of a speed bump, about that, is hard to live with, yeah.
This whole design is just, it's based around traffic calming, I mean, that's why we're narrowing the lanes, that's why I have the. That's the whole idea.
Yeah, we're not doing chicanes or any of the weird stuff that gets councils in a tizzy in California. None of the really weird stuff.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, my pleasure.
We're all together, appreciate you having us.
This is a session consideration, is there anything more that we need to do at this point? No, so. Well, this, uh, this document, how widely are you willing to share this?
Um, we'll have a digital version, we'll see what that does, I'll link it to you. Our website, we'll share it through CEG, just because it happens to catch quite a few businesses. Document-wise, there we want to.
Just email and text me how many more copies you want.
Try to keep them at the library for y'all.
Can you resend the digital version?
I, yeah, um.
It's probably, once it's on the site, on the website.
I'll talk to Jeremy about that, I just ordered that on, and I didn't think it was going to work.
Thank you for being here, Jeremy, and thanks for your thorough explanation.
It's my pleasure, thank you, Councilor.
Moving to fourth item, discussion consideration will be an architect's. Envision of LBC Childcare Study, Appalachia's Need, which will be in. Is that work done now for that, like, we didn't schedule any meetings.
Uh, there aren't any additional meetings.
They may do more work for us if it's been done before. So this is all done, so unless there aren't any questions, I would move to approve the open end of voice. Two, four, four, two, six, zero, 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 that's three, the amount of $4,303 to six months. I'll take a second to that, I've got some discussions.
I'll take it.
Good, so, now, is the next point in that process, just have it run by the estimator and give us a, a number?
Um.
We got a long memo from, from M.A.T. a week ago or whatever, but, uh.
I don't.
Do you need that information?
I don't think so, and the reason I say that is because there is a significant gap that needs to be made up in a fundraising capacity. And if certain steps or certain levels and that are not met, then there really is no point in actually paying, to have the architects' estimators to do more work. We have a fairly comfortable, um, idea of where this is potentially going to be at. Now, from a city council perspective, is, is, you know, we talked about five to five and a half million. What doesn't get paid up in fundraising, you know, the city has to, to make those dollars up. You have to be comfortable knowing that that number of five and a half million may fluctuate.
And then five and a half is the half of the 11 that we talked about, based on the square footage and price per square foot and all that.
But is 11 gonna be the number?
Right. No, I assume.
Well, we did the estimator break that. Second thing was, it was a, you know, lift, five, six months ago, to commit the 19,000, 19,000 RFP and do the four meetings, run us through options and so on and so forth here. Now we're here, now we're at the point where we're at, we're gonna put another extra four, and I don't recall that we added any extra services to what was. Part of the 19.
Yes, part of 19.
Yeah, yeah, it's, uh, page 38, it identifies it, so this is just the.
Sounds good.
It lasts always there. The next thing we need from them, that's what I'm looking for. Okay, and motion on the floor, approve this open-end architect's invoice for childcare study. If there's another question, sort of discussion, bring the board on, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
An opposed, motion carries. Session, discussion consideration of cemetery void request for proposal. After 40 years, they've decided not to go into this.
So, just to elaborate on this, Paradise Landscaping has been doing the mowing at Mount Vernon Cemetery for quite some time. Of course, he established a cemetery commission this past year. Conversation was for them to review landscaping, stone maintenance, I mean, just a number of things that you gotta put back on their plate. Um, I want to be clear, that, nobody from the cemetery commission had a, a conversation with the individual who owns Paradise. He had caught wind that after this year, this coming mowing cycle, that we would likely, uh, put an RFP out just to make sure that we were getting pricing and then to, um, pin all of that into a contract. The word contract apparently did not sit well with him. His current submitted was a one-page, this is what I expect.
It's been like three sentences for the entire time I've been here.
Now, I, I would say that, from a city perspective, it would be in our best interest to move forward with the contract, just so that lays out what the expectations are outside of this mowing. So, and, and Paradise did do mowing, there, you know, there's, uh, leveling and dirt, there's seeding, there's watering of, uh, grave sites. But, um, unexpectedly, after he had caught wind about, you know, the potential for next year, submitted his resignation and decided he was done altogether. So, at this point, we need to put an RFP together, we do have a couple, um, individuals that have already looked at our request for proposals and submitted numbers, so I think we're going to be fine, I know Eldon must panic just a little bit, are we just gonna have too much suffering going, but.
I should have been just putting it up to RFP.
We, we had, they had asked for what the RFP was going to look like. So they, they gave us basically rough numbers based upon, uh, what this, this RFP looked like.
So did the new cemetery commission, were they involved in the scope or at least reviewed the scope?
They did.
Yes. I'm glad to hear that.
They gave us the apartment on the RFP.
Great.
So here, we're just accepting the RFP.
The resignation, we're accepting the resignation, right?
You don't necessarily have to accept the resignation.
The motion is for the RFP.
Yeah. The, the reason that we are doing the RFP is because he's resigning.
Got it, got it.
From mowing services, so he didn't have a contract, there really isn't anything for you to approve.
It's not realized.
He just, yeah, he just rescinded basically his offer to mow. I can tell you, obviously, it's going to be more expensive. But I will say that I have fielded more complaints in the last two to three years as it relates to damages to stones being hit by mowers and trimmers. So, that I think was at the forefront of the concern of the cemetery commission, they just wanted to be able to have a conversation. And did take the news kindly and, um, just walked in and handed his resignation to me, he actually spoke to Laurie when I was gone, so. Kinda is what it is.
Well, I will move to approve the RFP for the cemetery mowing or childcare services.
I will say. Good for me, Scott? Cemetery care is probably almost a category of police protection, fire protection, animal protection, and you don't want to be so harsh in your RFP and your guidelines here, that you don't necessarily want to be the extremely lowest provider here. You want a service level that's appropriate too. Uh, we got a motion for it to approve, um, this RFP as presented, and raise the red vote on that, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
An opposed, motion carries. Moving on to reports, this report, any questions? Steve is starting, I think, on one week vacation today.
Yes, he was out of, out of the state today.
Yeah. Yeah. Any questions about police reports? Eldon Public Works, lots of photos as always. Gas tank down there quickly. About a couple weeks ago, the gas guys put the work inside. Open gas. Put the gas line. Any questions for Eldon? Parks and Rec report, Mr. Sider sent that out today.
Great numbers.
Your season's kind of up.
We're feeling it. It's not a bad thing.
Good programs, junior highs in Cedar Rapids, middle schools, whatever.
Yeah, we actually didn't have as many kids as we were expecting for that, but that worked out really well.
Two hundred and fifty kids, whatever.
Hundred and fifty kids was the anticipated. I think they left fifty of them back at the school because they were not well behaved.
So it's an honor. Marvelous, not most to ride the bus.
Exactly. I'm okay with that.
You have great kids.
It's a privilege.
And full hour reports. Grace has asked once in a while if she should be here. I keep telling her that she doesn't need to be here, so I'm just not able to get with that.
She does a good job of helping you.
I've sent her notes, tell her thanks. That covers your reports. Moving on to discussion items, not action, but a bunch of discussion. The process begins.
So I put together today a memo for you. And I started out trying to explain what the most recent mailing of everybody that received at home. So every everybody at home received one of these documents in the mail. In an effort to be as transparent as possible when it comes to proposed tax levy rates and what the potential impact could be. That was the intent. So and it's not just Mount Vernon, it's every community in Iowa. If you turn your page over on the back and they show you what proposed what your rate was this year and what it could be, you'll notice that they didn't just change the levy rate, they changed the value of your home by ten thousand. So the little explanation that says hypothetical values below pairs the amount of property taxes on residential property with a value of a hundred thousand in the current year and a hundred and ten thousand in the proposed year.
So here's a church going apples to oranges.
Yes.
For you to figure out what's going on with property taxes.
Now, I think in an in an effort to be transparent with the citizens of Mount Vernon, can both change year to year? Yes. Is it more complicated than that? Yes. So what my memo does is do a more side by side comparison of what it would look like if the housing value stayed at a hundred thousand dollars. So you did more of an apples apples comparison. That increase is actually three points, three point five one percent. So not thirteen point nine two or eight two, it's three point five one. Now, does housing balance value change? Yes. Does it change by ten percent every year? No. Remember that by Iowa law, they're required to reassess every two years in the odd number of years. So in twenty, your fiscal year twenty twenty six, there's a chance that your value could stay within a couple thousand dollars of one another just because they won't look at it again until twenty twenty seven. So I think that's where I have a little bit of heartburn with the notice that is required to go off. I say is if you don't know to look at that that little blurb and say or catch that it goes from a hundred to a hundred and ten thousand, it looks like, you know, it looks like the city county and school are doing nothing but hoarding, you know, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen percent increases when that's absolutely not true. So the other part to that is if property values do increase by, say, ten percent in a given year, the rollback in which the state sets is adjusted as well. So on the front page of my memo, if you take a look at it and you go fiscal year twenty twenty three through twenty six, you'll notice that fiscal year twenty four is our highest amount of city property tax. And we are actually down seventy dollars for this next fiscal year being proposed in twenty twenty six. So they don't want to show the the negative decrease because it doesn't necessarily fit in with the rhetoric that they're, you know, putting out there from the point. So there's that. Now, because I heard the legislature make comments about, well, you know, cities are really good at throwing out hypotheticals. So as opposed to doing just a hypothetical, this second table is my home. So anybody is welcome to have this document, but you can see exactly where the issue is. And fiscal year twenty twenty two, the assessed value is one hundred and seventy thousand two hundred. And fiscal year twenty twenty six, that assessed value is two hundred and fifty one thousand five hundred. For those of you that want to know why property taxes elevate like this, it is because the assessed values are required to be looked at every two years. And that is what they are not fixing. So if you look at, you know, say fiscal year twenty two to twenty three, and again, twenty three being an odd year. So you're going to see an adjustment. It goes it goes from one hundred and seventy eight thousand to two hundred and nineteen thousand. And the total tax bill jumps from thirty seven hundred to just about forty five hundred. Now, the city tax rate goes up about a hundred dollars. But the overall tax bill goes up about eight hundred.
That's because of the school.
The school, the county and everybody else. And rollback. So rollback, you are paying in twenty twenty two, you are paying taxes on fifty six percent of the value of your home. This next year, you're paying taxes on forty seven percent of the value of your home. So take all of that into consideration. And I will agree with one thing that's come that is coming out of Des Moines is property tax system is complicated and it it will take me an entire week to start to finish it, to explain it to somebody so that I think they can walk out of my office feeling good about knowing what they're looking at. So.
You've done a good job, though. It's quite easy.
But I, you know, again, I wanted to tie it using their example. A hundred thousand dollars is an easy way to show the changes because it's it's simple math. But I'm like, well, I'm going to go ahead and pull the history on my house so somebody can say this is exactly what this looks like. Yes, property taxes have increased. Values have increased.
Yours has increased forty one percent.
Correct. And and my tax my tax bill has increased by thirty four percent. So, you know, the conclusion is the taxes are not going up at the same rate the values are. But if the values were curtailed every two years, I think therein lies the issue. And I will forward this on to our representative and senator just so that they have it at their disposal. But.
If the rollback had stayed at fifty six point four percent like it was in twenty twenty two, you'd be, your taxable value would be a hundred and forty two thousand.
Yeah, so our tax.
Instead of a hundred and nineteen.
Our levy rate up from from twenty twenty two to twenty twenty six, our levy rate went up fifty cents. And the amount of city tax that I paid, even with the fifty cent increase per per thousand, is less than two hundred dollars. So the property tax increase is occurring because cuts are being made on the other side. So that was kind of, this first page is more of a an explanation using my house, using their example, just to try and kind of explain back how what that notice everybody received because they're going to look at, as I did, looked at, you know, increasing thirteen point nine two percent. And I'm like, God, that's awesome. I got a lot of revenue that I don't have to worry about. That's just not the case. For for an example, I'm going to skip down to kind of the the last portion of my memo and talk about what was already cut.
What page are you on?
Be the third page.
Oh, thank you.
Next fiscal year, we will eliminate the part time city hall position. That saves certain two thousand dollars a year. We will not hire a police officer for a majority of the next year, basically putting a hiring freeze on. That will save another fifty thousand. And then we're moving individual wages from the general funds to the enterprise funds. So all total, this eliminates the need to cut into the any fund balance at the end of the year by about half. It's not sustainable. I will tell you this, I can't, you know, I can't furlough a police officer for half the year moving forward. So.
Not with a new chief.
No. What is going to end up happening is we're going to continue to put more pressure on enterprise funds because we can still, as of right now, control them.
I'm sorry. Define for me what enterprise.
Enterprise funds are water and sewer solid waste.
I just had to put it that way.
So going back up into page two, I had originally kind of prefaced the council with the the idea that water and sewer rates combined were going to increase by eleven percent this year. I am recommending as of July one that they increase by fifteen percent. I began the budget process at eighteen. The new water meters are catching enough flow that I would would recommend holding off doing anything other than three percent on the water. But sewer rates are going to go up twelve percent. And they're going to have to go up another eight percent next year. Now, part of that is what is going on at the state level and trying to figure out where we're going to continue to pay for for SAV unless you're looking at cutting services. The other part of that is a bond issue that was made back in two thousand nine. Does anybody remember the Build America Bond Program?
What year is on the record?
Well, so it's actually five. They were supposed to, there were higher interest rate bonds that they would rebate a portion of the interest rate back to you so that it brought down the overall cost of the bond. That lasted two months. So those are higher interest rate bonds that we did in two thousand nineteen refinance. But the the payments on that bond alone are two hundred and forty thousand dollars a year for the next five years. I attempted to hold off on doing any major increases except we are facing a phase two construction schedule because we have to meet the the DNR's requirements for nutrient reduction strategies at the sewer plant. So there's going to be an overlap. I can't, I can't hold off the DNR any longer. I held them off for five years, trying to buy this debt down as much as humanly possible before we got to having to do phase two. We already did phase one. Unfortunately, the the price tag for phase two at the time that we're looking at it was about one and a half million dollars. So my expectation is that somewhere between two and two and a half million dollars now. But if I only had a year or two left on that bond payment, I would just let sewer go a little negative and let it catch back up after. Five years is unsustainable. If we do nothing, even with an eight percent increase, sewer ends ends the year in a negative close to a hundred and seventy thousand. So I'm not even asking to to try and.
We're just trading one hundred percent.
Yes, one hundred percent. So it's twelve percent this year and eight percent next year. That's probably what's going to happen. You'll have to do another ordinance amendment to make that happen. Water, I just put a caveat in there, I can't guarantee next year, but I think we can hold off this year and and see. So I was able to keep it down to fifteen percent instead of eighteen, which doesn't sound great, you know, regardless.
Well, again, your example with your house provides great perspective for people. And I would encourage you to do the same thing with maybe what is our average sewer bill? And what is our average water bill for citizens of Mount Vernon? If my sewer and water are each fifty dollars, twelve percent per month is six dollars. And three percent per month is three dollars. So it's nine dollars. So it's going to end up being a hundred and nine dollars or a hundred and eight dollars, whatever it is, for my family. For fifteen percent. It's, you know, it's it's an increase, but it's not as much as one might think. What do you think of a fifteen percent increase?
And and just to make it pretty clear, when we're talking about phase one, phase two at the water treatment, these were state mandated updates and changes that did not have funding mechanisms put behind.
No, they never have.
Yeah. Okay. Make sure it wasn't, it wasn't an impression that we.
So our sewer plants, all sewer plants.
It wasn't optional.
All sewer plants in Iowa are considered point point source losers, which requires them to carry a permit to the DNR. That permit permit is renewed somewhere between ten and fifteen years on average. And I would tell you that every time that 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 permit gets renewed, there's a new standard that needs to be better upgrades that need to happen. Now, there are communities in Iowa that are facing thirty to fifty million dollar upgrade at either plants. So I'm not going to sit here and complain too much about spending between three and four million on ours. And it still operates at about half capacity. But that's still a significant amount of money. And I recognize that.
A lot of good inflation, good examples in this handout.
The last thing I have for you as as it relates to that, the last page I did include our price increases for the pool, of course, when making upgrades at the pool. But, you know, when people ask me about inflation, when I first started, Matt and I sat down and discussed lifeguard pay, assistant manager pay. And we we hammered out the best deal in the world. We walked out and every, all the lifeguards, we're going to make about eight dollars and fifty cents an hour. We thought we were doing a wonderful job. Lifeguards are now going to make fourteen, thirteen.
Starting, they're going to be fourteen.
Yeah. Give me a word.
I think it was five and a quarter when I was like.
So summer health is fourteen plus dollars an hour. And next year, the LBC will be next. We try to keep the LBC in every other year. But know that we're increasing wages at the pool and proceeds will help. And we're going to have to do it at some point for the LBC as well.
So there's a season pass non resident double. Is the twenty twenty five to be correct? If that's the case, it's going down. It's the only one.
That's a misprint.
I was like, I don't think it was.
That's a misprint.
Okay.
Should we go on fifty five?
One fifty five, yes, okay.
Any questions to say after this? Lot of information here. Crash now, so thank you for addressing what we're not addressing.
Just a quick question. A little off topic here, but fair about the pool. We were talking about last week, I mean, it looked like there's been some good work done. I saw three county mixers and about ten trucks out there. If we're talking about last week, I mean, look like there's, we've worked on, I guess, uh, three company mixers and about ten trucks up there. Seven fifty five one brake.
I, I will say that, um, Laura and I have talked about this on numerous occasions. We're down there, I think it's most likely to be, but love, I have enjoyed so much working with Satagon and Woodgriff. So Woodgriff is the pool, Satagon was the, the P.
Yeah.
Night and day difference, it's been a dream. Jeff and you go with Woodgriff's construction. I, every time they send one of their administrative staff down here to see how it's going, I'm like, you guys got it.
They are just, they are the non-holds work with.
So, um, yeah, for the most part, uh, or almost half the vacuum is completed. They've removed, um, they removed a lot of the toilets and, and journals and things like that. I will tell you that there is one last change order that's coming. We went over the pink colors of the partitions for the bathrooms.
I'm taking full responsibility.
And, uh, I didn't realize the fact that number one, we can't, we can't match what's in there. Thank God. They're, they're really bad. So they were going to be new and old, and I asked Jeff at the time, I'm like, what are we really looking at? And he, he thought somewhere between like eight, ten thousand dollars. I'm like, if I leave these, I will get eight to ten thousand dollars worth of headaches. Why did we do this? So great progress is being made. You know, the pool is potentially going to open on time, fingers crossed. But know that there's still going to be some work that needs to be completed. There might be a day, once the pool opens at some point during the week, that we'll have to close for the day and allow them to come back in. Especially when they're working in the locker rooms, we don't want, we don't want that controversy to. Really can't do anything with the blue roof, so it's a lot of white and blue.
I don't know.
It will be all one color. I'm very happy about that because there's about four of them down there right now.
Gray and tan mixture. I'll call them white.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just want to say optically, it looks like they're doing a lot, so.
Good year. They were super excited about the playmate, which looks like it came out of.
How many pieces did he say that was?
It looked, um.
Pieces of what?
The playmate.
Basically it was replacing like the frog in the little mushroom over there.
Yeah.
I don't, I mean, I don't remember what, I mean, it was an insane amount of pieces.
It looked like an Ikea assembly.
And it came with one element.
Yeah.
A budget related, um, reminder that next week, not next week, first meeting in April is our double meeting night. So six o'clock is the budget meeting, and then six thirty is the regular council meeting.
And as a reminder.
Yeah, you pick the good ones, you go.
Anything else for discussions on budgets? Staff? Moving on to reports, the air council, et cetera. Lot of activity in the last two weeks since last meeting. I'll just mention three things. First of all, kudos to Eldon tonight. Tree City USA Urban Forest Grant Application. We were acknowledged for, I guess, extra efforts, but that Eldon's done, frankly, in the plant trees here in the last year or so. So besides just putting in the application to get the renewal, um, we got invited to a luncheon at Ankeny. And you're going to be in Des Moines already for a meeting that day. So he's going to shoot up there and I'm going to meet him for a presentation at a event in Ankeny. First Grand Park Bank. I'll get some details of the place and so on. So that does a neat, you know, usually they send me an email back saying the report's not complete, so. Second thing was, um, I think this is getting pretty public now, but Beechoo is going to be recognized Thursday at one o'clock, am I right?
Yes.
For, uh, a grant through Verizon. Okay, wrong company. But, um, for the, the green space to the east of the, uh, of the Beechoo. So it's kind of a neat, interesting thing that Kelly and John, Ken, Wayne are doing there. So there's going to be a neat presentation there at one o'clock on Thursday this week. And the third thing was, um, last Monday, I took a call at ten thirty from, from CBS for a, uh, an interview at one thirty, and I spent two hours with, uh, Maron, Zach, for about ten seconds of dialogue. I had a bunch of great quotes. It was, um, the context was tariff as it relates to A, and she spent, I guess, four hours with.
Timkeen.
Timkeen, thank you, um, out in, uh, south of town. And then two and a half hours with me. But, um, being interviewed on the bench by the Mount Vernon Bank in the shade. And I don't know how many times she had to stop because there were people going by, there was so much activity. And, uh, yeah. So on a Monday at one thirty in the afternoon, which is not a high, you would not think of a, a busy downtown, but that was just another example for her about, uh, this is a viable, a very viable and active downtown. We talked about childcare, we talked about the, the banners on the posts, we talked about the festival season with, um, chocolate walk coming up. She was online with her producer, act, you know, live. So she would say, uh, can I just talk a little bit more about this or ask him this question? So, so this is a very interesting experience, but, uh, a lot of time to prep for that and, you know.
I'm sure you represented as well.
Well, I, I told her, I've got a meeting at this time, and I was going to class at this time, but then I'll come over there after that. But, uh. It was a, it was a five and a half minute, um, seg. Oh, the whole segment, yeah. Yeah, the whole segment was Tom just get all that. That's fine, that's fine, that's fine. But those are the three things that we picked for the report. What did Vicki say? Get a haircut.
I mean, there's a guy a block down from where you were sitting.
Tomorrow, Wednesday.
You got a boy, you're a little trapped while you're in there.
You know how hard it is to get in and everything.
I'm going six months, I have to wait six months out on him.
God loves Chakobal there. He's the best. But he's got a visiting camera group. I was in the chair one time and some guy walked in and asked if he could walk in. I'm like, are they, we both snickered, like, are you kidding? Wrong topic. Any council reports? I, I, I just, I can give an update. The Elverton Lisbon Childcare Group met last week on Wednesday, and we have a really full agenda. And the two things I'll just highlight from that is that both Lisbon and Mount Vernon Community School Districts have signed on with Champions to help them with the, uh, their early childhood learning center in Lisbon and Kids Club. And this group of childcare, uh, Mount Vernon Lisbon Childcare Group has been helping to augment hourly wages for these two entities. And so the big question is, now that they're turning to a for-profit group, is this something that we still want to do? And I think the answer is yes, but we were thinking about that, and we're going to meet and talk about that more, um, coming up. And what was the second thing I wanted to mention on that front? No, I can't. Oh, yeah. And that is that we are heading into spring fundraising. We have some money in the bank, so we can make a gift to augment and retain quality, high quality childcare providers and workers. But we also need to refill the coffers as well. And Gary's has been, um, very, very kind to allow us to do a roundup. Couple of weeks there, I know the analyst has, has done that. They really like to support, um, nonprofits that serve both Lisbon and Mount Vernon, and, and we did. So I'm very grateful for that, to help jumpstart our, start our fundraising. And committee reports? Then Chris's report, anything to add?
Now, meetings. How does the office, um, next week?
Sounds like, uh, what we learned from Cordell is that King Chapel is still unscheduled to begin construction this summer.
Yes, although, um, I want to preface that by saying not all of it will be visible.
Yeah.
A lot of things going on on the inside of the building.
Or the top of the building.
Yes.
Anything else, any other comments as far as council? Something else that needs to come before this group, otherwise we are adjourned. Thank you very much.